Oh, got it. Welcome to the August 8th meeting of the Hampton School Board. If we would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Let's be honest.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Since we have no audience, there'll be no audience comments right now. If any audience shows up, then we'll give them a chance to talk. Does any board member have any comments on their committees that they've been to? Most of them are off for the summer, but does anyone else?
I don't know if you folks are receiving the emails from New Hampshire School Boards or so. Did you get them today?
Yeah, yesterday. I got the legislative update.
Yeah, and there's a bunch of them. There are webinars, as well as the legal conference and so on and so forth. So as long as everybody's getting those.
Everybody should take a chance and look through their legislative update as well. There's a lot of important information in there, and a lot of it will come through for us through our policy updates, but you should take a look and see what's coming up.
I just have one thing.
Yeah.
Frank, are you going to continue to serve on the steering committees for goal setting? Because we'll do those meetings in September.
I'm sorry?
Will you continue to serve on the steering committee for goal setting?
Oh, yes.
All right, those will be in September, so we'll get some dates.
Give me some dates?
Yep.
And times and places?
Yep, yep. We'll do a couple of meetings after school in September, and yeah, all right, thank you.
And I did have one thing, which is just to remind everybody, even though PTA didn't meet over the summer, the national, I'm sorry, not National Night Out, the Party on Park is going to be on September 16th. That got pushed off for weather purposes, but that's going to be a really big event. I think there's going to be a bunch of performers, there's going to be a bunch of food trucks, it's all going to be over at Tuck, so that's going to be a nice event.
If you need after-school childcare, get ahold of the Southeast, Kings, Southeast YMCA immediately. They are going to make their decision August 14th to decide whether they're going to provide the program or not. Right now, they don't have enough children to provide the program, so if you need childcare, don't wait until the open houses at the schools call this week or next week, so they can make a decision that will hopefully help the Hampton children.
If we want to include it, I have the phone number for that.
Oh, good.
603-342-3361, or you can check out their website, www.sdymca.org.
Is that something that we can send an email out to all parents, like tomorrow?
I believe we have. I think Nathan's shaking his head, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, a couple of places.
Yep, and we'd probably have to put an article in the paper just to let families know. I don't, I'm wondering if people are thinking about that now, because it's summertime. The concern is, is that if we do not have the enrollment, they will, and we need the enrollment by that date, that August 14th, they will not plan for us to be a host site. So we have a drop deadline of August 14th. So we used to be upwards around 60 students, and we barely have eight right now, so, yeah.
All right. Anybody else have any more reports of committees? All right, Mr. Lannan.
Hi, it is August, so not much happening. You get, you have my newsletter in front of you. We're sending out some information to parents this week. This is a critical week, so I want parents to be aware. Tim Smith sent something out from the technology about Alma already on Monday. Later on this week, Jamie and I are sending something out to parents, letting them know about all the upcoming events, the times for open house, orientation and all of that. So that's all critical information as we're gearing up for the start of school. We're finishing up hiring. Jamie and I seem to be ready to go. Does anyone have any questions for us?
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Lannan?
Thank you. We'll be up later with the data presentation.
Mr. Sadler.
Yeah, just getting school ready. We had extended school year and a Title I program for the whole district in our building, so Mr. Lassard and his crew are working in a wonderfully frantic pace to get things ready for our students and teachers to return. So first, just a big thank you to facilities, because they've been doing a tremendous job this summer for us, and with all the things happening between Camp Invention and all the other programming. Other than that, some similar things to Mr. Lannan. We'll be having our Ice Cream Social Meet the Teacher on Monday, August 28th. A flyer will come out probably at the end of this week, and then you'll see postings on Facebook and other communication about that. Parents should be ready for that first Sunday night. I think it's August 27th when they'll get our first Sunday call of the year. So that comes out at 7:00 PM. You can listen to it live or wait and listen to it recorded, but every week, parents will get that, and it gives them an overview of what's going on in the school, both during, before and after school day. Other than that, we're just looking forward to, you know, the year to start. We're fully staffed in terms of professional staff. We are currently looking for two paraprofessionals due to some resignations, but other than that, we're looking forward to opening the doors at the end of August and bringing the students back.
Any questions for Mr. Sadler?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hawkins.
We are busy at work, getting ready to send out our letters to parents, send out our letters to staff. I want to thank the custodial staff here. We had a lot of moves over the summer, and some shifting around, and they've done a wonderful job getting everything ready. School looks like it could move things around a little bit, and we'd be open tomorrow. So they've done a wonderful job. They've worked really, really hard. We have a couple of staff members coming to you today for nomination. We still have a couple left, but we have some people in the queue that we'll be, we'll be looking into as soon as we can. So we're ready to go. Very excited.
Any questions for Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you.
Mrs. Lo, is Dr. Lo still with the napkin?
Happy to be here. Good to see you all. So you did get my report, and as you know, there are no numbers in here, because I want to make sure that we've got our numbers all situated for the beginning of school, but there was some information in there. I can chat a little bit about ESY. I know it is on the agenda a little bit later, but I put it in my report. Do you want me to, so, okay. So we had 80 students that were identified and another 48 Title I kids, so we had a big crowd here, and a big thank you goes out to all the staff. It ran in July for the four weeks in July. The whole program was here at Marston, so again, a big thank you to the custodial staff who had to move furniture from one school to another, and for the administration at Marston for, you know, keeping up with all that goes on. And Tim got a break for summer school for one summer. And we have some legal issues that continue to arise in special ed, just to keep you posted. We are doing our due diligence. We are looking, looking good on all sides of the front, but we are battling a few, a few fights that we're, we're fighting the good fight, and still providing good services to our students. The other thing that I do is write grants, and so you'll see the bottom of the report. Most of the grants have decreased. I just wanted to make sure people are aware of that. I did put the numbers in there. The IDEA grant, which is specifically for students with disabilities, did go up a little bit. That's because our numbers in special ed did go up. The grants are all based on the numbers that you have in your current district. That's how they decide how much money you're going to get. So as you can see, Title I, II and IV, they all decreased. The numbers are in there. And of note is that Title III, a very important note for us, is no longer available to Hampton, and that was $3,490. So we'll be doing a little bit of something, probably in our own budget, just to kind of make up that, that, those funds for the ESOL program. But that grant, the state said that if you don't get more than $10,000, that they're not going to give you your money, and we have never gotten more than $10,000. We've been in a consortium the whole time with SAU 21 and all the Hamptons, the little ones, but now none of us are going to get it, because we all have too small amounts of money, so they only want to give $10,000 or more. And there's no such thing as a consortium for Title III anymore, so that's why it went away. And we're going to continue to spend down our ESRS I, II and III. ESTR 1 is due this September. Mariah and I are working really hard on, you know, spending those funds. The grants are written in a certain way, and you've got to spend them the way you write them. And I'm looking forward to a great year ahead. We have some openings, by the way. We have some para openings. We've had some resignations. As you heard, Nathan's got some openings at his building, and there's some, also some para openings at Hampton Academy. So if you are out there looking for a job, please look on AppleTrax. You can see the openings that are available at this point. We are fully staffed with our certified staff, though. Right now, we're just looking for paras. And an RBT, which is a registered behavior technician. That's it. Any questions?
I do.
Hey, Frank.
A couple of questions regarding grants, and then I'd like to ask a question regarding what I asked last, at the last meeting. But based on your submission on Title III, we will no longer receive $3,500, and I'm rounding.
Yep.
And that's going to come out of the general budget? Nope?
Well, no. I mean, we've done, we, we don't know anything. Right now, we're just not going to get it, and we have to decide if we're going to put it in our budget, or if we're just going to not have any supplies, or do what we used to do with that grant. That grant spent, it helped us with a family night. We were legally obligated to do a family night, so we had some funds in there. We had some funds in there for some books and some supplies for our ESOL students. That's how we spent, and some professional development. That's how those funds were spent. So as a, as a district, we need to decide, you know, if we do nothing, we do nothing. If we do something, we do something. If we find a way to fund some part of ESOL supplies in our regular budget by, you know, resourcing something else away, then that's what we'll do at budget time.
So should we make a, a plan to look at putting it in the budget for the next?
Yeah, I think, yeah, for sure. We'll definitely look at it this, this coming budget season, but right now, we don't need to do anything different.
Well, it's too late to do anything now.
Well, yeah, and we just found out, so.
And what about the 56 on Title I? I know you briefly mentioned it, but is that, how is that going to impact the students involved in those programs?
You mean the decrease in funding? Well, again, it's based on numbers, and so we, what we'll do is we just won't hire as many Title I tutors as we have in the past. That's really what that grant funds, is our Title I tutors.
Won't that be a detriment?
We will be able to, actually, we were down one Title I tutor almost all last year, because we were short, we couldn't find anyone to fill it. So right now, we've been able to fund that program and have the appropriate personnel in both buildings at this point for the reading. The math interventions is a, is a different story, but we've always done Title I and done fine with our Title I tutors through that grant.
And we're not looking at increase in the student population in any three of those programs?
Not, not that I'm aware of. I mean, again, the Title I numbers come from our free and reduced numbers, so that's, I need to, we're going to get them from Mary, again.
I've noticed things change by October, November, and we're increased.
I hear you. I hear you. Yes.
And then my, my last question is, last, at the last meeting, I asked about paraprofes, paraprofessionals assignments. Has that been, uh?
Yes, we're, yep, we're, I've been working with the principals. We're working on getting them all the final, exactly what grade level they're going to be in, and if they're going to be a one-on-one, that, that information is coming.
So that has not been?
We have not. We still have multiple openings, so it's very challenging for us to say, we're going to put all these people here, but what if we find someone else who's good in a certain area? So we are, we have tentatively placed all the paras in the district in a specific spot.
But they don't have their assignments yet.
They know what school they're in, and most of them know exactly what they're doing. I'm not sure what, you know, who's looking for something, but.
I'm just saying, it's, it's August 8th. School starts in less than three weeks, and no one knows where they're going.
Well, I don't, I wouldn't say that.
I mean, they know what building they're going to go into.
No, how many paras did we lose over the summer, though? What, four?
Well, I.
Or a few, four or five?
More than three.
Yeah.
Yes.
I know, so.
Yeah.
There's some rearranging. Presumably, we've had students enroll over the summer.
Yes.
Special ed students.
And, and students who move out of the district. So there has been definitely a lot of movement. But also, it's, I don't think that there's a whole bunch of people out there saying, "I have absolutely no idea what I'm going to do next year as a para." We did not make major changes in their assignments, and they knew that when they left. If there was anybody who was going to have a major, major difference, like a change of school, or moving from preschool to fifth grade, you know, we would, they would know that. So many of them are going to be placed in the same position that they were last year. So there's no real big surprises at all on the para front. But we have some openings, so we need to get those filled up before we can make our final, final draft.
Well, do you have, like, a drop dead date? Do you give those assignments to, I mean, not the day before school begins?
No, parents are going to be joining us on the 24th of August.
24th of August.
24th of August. They will be joining us for some professional development, and it's that time they can get their exact classroom, because they'll be working with their teachers on that day.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last but not least, Mr. Lassard, do you have anything to report?
Ray? So I just want to go over and review some of the projects that we're working on and some of our challenges. First of all and foremost, I want to thank our custodial crews. They've done a really wonderful job for us this year, and I truly appreciate it. So first, I'd like to say, we are planning to open on time, and sorry, students, but school will open on time. Parents are probably very happy about that. So SAU 90, we're working, continue to work on our renovations there. They're moving along slowly, but we're continuing to push forward on that. The security improvements with additional card readers, and Center School closing down the airlock, so that it's more secure there. Center School HVAC project, we've run into a little hurdle and some obstacles. During our project, we did some discovery. We found some hidden asbestos-containing materials above the ceiling. We are working with an industrial hygienist to discover and identify all of its locations, and then we continue to move forward, and we'll get discover of our scope of work and move forward on that project, so we can get the HVAC going. We also working with Food Service. They had got a grant to replace some of their inefficient kitchen equipment, and we're getting ready to install that and to repair some drain lines in the kitchen. Other than that, I will probably be as happy as a parent come September 1st to shift my gears and go back to our normal school day. Thank you for all your support, because we truly appreciate it. And I would like to say that we're looking for summer hires, but summer's over.
How about fall? Do you have anything open in the fall?
Yes, we have two full-time custodial positions that are still open. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Onto master planning and goal setting? Sure.
Can I just, a few highlights on my report?
Yeah, yes.
Not, not anything that you probably couldn't read, but just to kind, to let the, the public know that we're obviously very excited as it is August, and we know that in just a few short weeks, we will be opening the schools, and we're very excited to do so. We continue planning all summer long, and we had the opportunity to meet with our Hampton officials during our retreat this summer, August 1st, 2nd and 3rd, where we met with Chief Reno, as well as we met with Chief McMahon from Hampton Fire and Rescue. And so during that time, we spoke about our safety plans, and we spoke about specifically reunification, as that's an area that we are currently working on. We also talked about ALICE training, and it was just a great meeting, and we're looking in September to host a work session as we continue to unfold plans around ALICE training, but specifically around reunification, because that's the area that is probably the one that we need to focus on, for lack of a better way of saying it. So just to let you know that during that retreat, there was a lot of conversations about our goals from last year, and I'm going to share those in just a bit, and thinking about this year as well. We also spoke specifically about job descriptions and supervision and evaluation, and there was a lot of conversation around social-emotional learning, school climate, and balancing social-emotional learning with academics. We specifically spoke about the, the new policies and some of the old policies. In fact, we did a really in-depth dive on 12 different policies and had some great conversations. We do anticipate some changes coming forward from the legislation, as Wendy Rager, you, you brought forth. In fact, cursive and multiplication is now going to be required by the end of grade five. So there are some changes academically, but there's also some changes in other laws around specifically restraints and seclusion, so we were looking at that as well. So we're looking forward to continuing our work on the policies. We also are in the process of sending out our new teacher orientation. We're hoping to be able to do that this week, once we do some nominations this evening, and we're looking forward to welcoming back all, all new staff on Friday, August 18th. And that would be a pretty full day with opportunity to review our goals, some policies, FERPA confidentiality. Susan Antico will be there to talk about social-emotional learning and mentor program, and then obviously time for class setup. Monday will be, they'll be in their respective buildings, doing some tours, reviewing staff and student handbooks, again, policies, building protocols. And then, of course, Tuesday will be an overview from our business administrator, Mariah Curtis, along with Amber Levine, to review technology. There'll be some conversations around emergency, and then, of course, the trolley tour, which everyone looks forward to that afternoon, so we're looking forward to that. Additionally, we're hoping later this week to get out our welcome-back newsletter. We were, were a little delayed, but we wanted to make sure that we had everybody on that, so we're, we will get that out this week, and we're excited about that. And Monday, Wednesday, all staff will return. That's August 23rd. So the 23rd and the 24th, which is a Wednesday and Thursday, will be building-based. And then Monday will be our opening, and it'll be our welcome back and opening remarks. And Polly Bath will be here. She's a behaviorist, and we'll be speaking specifically around behavior as it relates to our students. And then our health trust will also speak afterwards, because we do anticipate some changes coming forward with health insurance. So at 10 o'clock that morning, we will host that. And then Tuesday, the 29th, school officially begins. We look forward to having children meet their teachers that day. Those times will vary by the schools, and I know principals are reaching out. Other than that, I think it's been a very busy summer with all kinds of camps, as we know, including Camp Invention, which is directed by many staff, but under Kim Olson from Center School. We're, we're pleased that she always steps up and does that, along with many of our staff members, and also our students. Our students volunteer to assist in the classroom. And then, of course, we had our extended year in Title I summer program, so it was a very busy, buzzing school this summer. Other than that, I think that's enough for now, unless there are questions on my report.
Any questions?
Okay.
Master planning and goal setting.
Yep, so, and Nick, I think, is going to put that up on the screen for us, so that people at home can take a look at that. We know that last year, we set district goals that are specifically related to communication, the physical and emotional safety of our schools and community, and then, of course, looking at curriculum instruction and assessment, and then finally, diversity and equity. And if, I'm happy to include this once again in your packet. I did so more near the end of last year, but I'm happy to do that again. One of the things that we did during the retreat is, we take a look at our goals to see what were the focal areas, what are the actions, our measures of success, and what were the outcomes. So if you look at the first goal, you know that we had, we wanted to improve our parental support for learning, and we did that through our newsletter. We do a weekly newsletter, as well as our Facebook, which we, we update every week. We do open house, family events, weekly calls using our messaging system. And then, of course, we had our new Alma, which is our student information system that we have, that we had implemented last year. We have SubReady, which is now automated, so it helps with our subbing and all of that. We are looking to move forward with Enforce 911. There were some issues at the municipality level. We weren't able to move forward on that like we had hoped to, but we are, we were told by Chief Reno that we are ready to move forward in that way, and this is a way of notifying everyone in our district through our devices, should there be something of concern that we would all need to be aware of. So that is Enforce 911, which our municipalities are also using, as well as Sacred Heart and Winnicott High School. So just another way to increase our communication with a resource that will be on everyone's device. And we know that we continue to pride ourselves on our communication with our families, our town, SAU 21, the New Hampshire School Administrators, as well as New Hampshire School Boards Association, and we continue to utilize all of those resources as it relates to our, our schools. We're always looking to expand our partnerships, and we're hopeful that we can continue doing so this summer. We continue to stay informed about what's going on with the legislature. We also had an opportunity to meet with the Budget Committee this summer in planning for, believe it or not, the fall. We had a great conversation with the chair, and we look forward to continue to keep those channels open. We also had a great conversation around energy, which is on people's minds as we look at our rising costs of our electricity and our heating bills. So that was a great conversation that we also had this summer. Their policy review, you'll see that there are many policies that will be coming up that we will need to be updating as it pertains to legislation. That'll be, that'll be ongoing as it is every year. And then, of course, thinking about how we can increase our student voice. That was a conversation we had at our leadership retreat, and we are looking at potentially implementing the My Voice survey this year to our students and our staff, just to get a, a pulse on how things are going. It has been a while since we've done it. We have used the My Voice, Voice survey two other times in our district, and it has been a while. I think it might be a good opportunity to get a sense of where we are with that. We'll talk more about that at our steering committee. Looking forward to hearing people's feedback surrounding that. And then, of course, continuing to have that open relationship with SAU 21, with Superintendent Meredith, Meredith Nadeau, Matt Farrar, the BA, as well as David Hobbs, the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Hobbs. And then moving on into our Goal 3, which is around physical and emotional safety, in terms of looking at responsive classroom and advisory, in terms of what we are doing with next steps regarding that work. with next steps regarding that work. We are looking to set some goals in terms of how advisory will continue to support our Hampton Academy staff and, of course, responsive classroom K5. We are always looking at how we can increase resources to that end. Self-care for all is important. In terms of our wellness committee, those meetings will continue as required by Health Trust. We know that last year, all leadership team completed the ICS 200 and 700 and 100. We participated in a Stop the Bleed training at the end of last year, along with Hampton Fire and Rescue. And we are continuing our training with Alice. And CPR and first aid is offered at least twice a year in district, so that will continue. We continue to retrain or update training on safety care as it relates to de-escalation for staff. Our BCBA are very instrumental in that training and ensuring that we do have that updated training. We are looking to bring in Connors Climb again this year, as it is a required annual training for suicide prevention, as well as we are looking at OVAUS this year in terms of how we can ensure that there is correct procedures for reporting and that we can reduce any bullying prevention or increased bullying prevention in our schools. That was a big conversation at our leadership retreat this summer. Internet safety will continue to be a focus, particularly as we're thinking about ChatGPT and how we will need to work with that, as this is now, we know, something that teachers, particularly at middle schools, high schools, everywhere, are now dealing with. And believe it or not, we still need to have a COVID plan, because this is the last year for ESAR funds, so there will be our COVID plan that is posted on our website, as this is our final year for ESAR funds. As we think about curriculum and professional practice, you're going to hear from the administrative leadership team and the principals regarding where we are with data. And you're going to hear about STAR assessments, as well as our New Hampshire State assessments. We continue to ensure that our students are working along a track of progress, trying to implement a response to intervention model that attempts to address and close gaps sooner than later. Believe it or not, we, Mariah and I, had an opportunity to meet with our Commissioner at the Superintendent's Conference, and there is grave concern around student progress in the sense that some schools are struggling to see rebounding from COVID. I'm happy to report that is not the case here. We are starting to see some rebounds. It's, it's, it's moving in the right direction. We will continue, though, to close those gaps and that will continue to be a focus for us as we continue to work specifically on math this year, but also literacy across the curriculum. And you can see that we are continuing to work with demonstrated success with ELA and math. I know that Hampton Academy worked at math last year at our recommendation, based on the scores that we were concerned with. And I think you'll see that there is starting to be some rebounding. And last year, we know we did the preschool study and we're moving forward. We probably closed that goal, but we're happy to continue conversations.
I would not say they closed that. I would say they probably closed their meeting and put it on hold.
Yep, right.
I think that's probably a better.
Yep. I think that the preschool will always be a focus as we are thinking about students. And I'm sure that Dr. Lois De Silva-Napton is happy to continue those conversations. And that's what, that's what we're going to look at. We're just looking at where we were and where we landed at the end of the year. And then the final goal we had was specifically around equity, ensuring that all staff had Title VI training. We did a partnership with New Hampshire Listens and we had a cohort of teachers that participated in that training. And we also had a number of community events. So that's where we landed with those goals for last year. And then you can see underneath those goals where Center, Marsden, and Hampton Academy built their goals from this. And we will look to update those goals. We'll think about what changes we want to make, where we want to focus. And of course, we welcome your feedback, your input, and your thoughts as we develop those goals for this coming school year. And those meetings will take place in September and we welcome your feedback.
These are more than words on paper. These are more than meetings where people sit around and discuss them. They're thing, are there items that you work on, that you implement? If you have a problem, then speak up. But we failed miserably. We failed as a board, we failed as a school system on several issues this year. And I hope that bullying is part of the program for next year and culture and climate of schools, because we have failed miserably. And when we fail, we hurt the students of SEU 90. And we shouldn't do that. We, as educators, should be helping them. So I hope culture and climate are one issue that you deal with. And I hope that bullying and mental health is the other.
Thank. Please.
I had a question. Currently, are any schools, or are all the schools, I don't know, using PBIS?
So PBIS is specifically more middle school. I know that they have used pieces of it in the past. Are you asking specifically K8 here, or are you asking for?
I just was wondering who's using it and where. So you just kind of answered my question.
Yeah.
So my next question, as I saw up there, is OVAUS.
Yes.
Which is kind of along the same lines, okay? Are any schools using that?
So, so we talked about that at the leadership meetings last year and we talked about it with the mental health team. And admittedly, the mental health team said that with COVID, they, they have not been as, it has not been on the front burner as it so, it should have been. And so that was a conversation I had with Sue Antico and the principals recently, really started in the spring, but it has continued all summer, in the sense that we really need to think about the fidelity of the program. At, as, to, to our knowledge, OVAUS was one of the only evidence-based programs that was out there aimed at bully prevention. We sent the counselors to the ASCA conference this summer, they attended virtually. I am curious to see if there was something that came out of there that would be, you know, recommended.
So I guess the answer to my question is not really.
Not to the extent it was prior to COVID.
Okay. So then, back up there, it's hard to see from here. There, near PBIS, there was, there was data, there was something about gathering data. And, and as part of PBIS, there was the Swiss Data Management System that you paid for and used. Are we using that?
We are not.
Okay, then that leads to my next question. Then, how are we keeping track of discipline and discipline trends, which they want to be done in PBIS?
So that is, that's a great question for the middle school and we can ask them. But what I would say to, what I know that probably Center and Marsden do is they are, they are keeping track of it in Alma, and that is exactly what, what Hampton Academy is doing as well.
So Alma would give them the same kind of readouts that Swiss would do.
Can Principal Hawkins, would you agree?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So that's how we're tracking it, yeah.
Any other questions? Presentation of data and next steps.
So that's going to be, the principals are going to come up and I believe Nick is going to help us to put up that presentation for us.
Thank you, welcome. We are here to talk about, all three of us, about the assessment results. And some of the assessments we're going to talk about this evening, if you can get to the next slide, Nick. The SAS, that's a comprehensive summit of assessments administered in Springs to grades three through eight. As you know, Center School does not participate in that. Best practice is that high-stakes testing does not begin in the primary grades, it begins in grades three and up. So Center School does not provide any data on that. Just starting last year, we started in grade two, the STAR exam, to give us some interim benchmarking and to give us some progress monitoring and how they're doing in the fall, the winter, and the spring. So I will be talking about that and the other two principals will be talking about that as well. Unique to Center School, because we don't have the high-stakes state testing, it does not preclude us from progress monitoring and making sure that children are making growth. And the best way to do that, we've found as we've shifted at Center School into more of the science of reading, is to really dig deep through the DIBELS testing program, through Amplify. DIBELS stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. And I will share with you this evening, results from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, to demonstrate what great growth students are making at Center School. So we'll start at Center School. And here are the DIBELS. If you look at it, we have kindergarten, then we have grade one and grade two, and then overall K through two. Three columns, the green is at or above benchmark. I'm just going to focus on the green right now and then you could easily follow if you wanted to, the yellow, which is below benchmark, and the red, which is well below benchmark. It would be the, the numbers that are not included. In kindergarten, for example, when we first gave this one-on-one test, it's a sit-down, it's paper and pencil, it's, it's question and answer. Excuse me, my voice is awful tonight. Students scored 44% as an aggregate. In the mid-year, they grew to 60%, that became at or above benchmark. And the amount of growth that they made by the end of the year, which you expect, which we didn't see the previous year, but that is a tremendous amount of growth in one year. The 87% of the students in kindergarten, or 79 out of a total of 91 students, are proficient, are proficient at above grade level, which correlates to only 5% below benchmark and 8% that are well below benchmark. And there are significant factors for some, for those reasons as well. So similar jumps in grade one. You start at 59th percentile as a baseline in the fall and they grow all the way to 83%, which is just a tremendous amount of growth. That is still learning how to read in grade K and one. Grade two becomes a little bit more challenging, because you're putting all of those skills together and now you're reading to learn a little bit more and understanding comprehension and other more difficult, complex skills. They still made tremendous growth from 56% to 68th percentile. So again, not a total wash for the year. I think it's a tremendous amount of growth in academics at Center School and I'm very proud of the staff and the support we had in the interventions as well in reading. So again, tremendous amount of growth. The next slide, Nick, talks about, oh, does anyone have any questions on that first? Or do you want to just kind of go through the whole presentation first and then have save questions at the end?
Anyone have any questions, feel free to ask.
The next slide is STAR. I don't have a base, I only have baseline for STAR. I don't have, like the other two schools will show, grade three students two years ago, how they go to grade four and how they go to grade five. At Center School, we only have the one grade that is doing it. In the fall, they came in at 60th percentile and at the end, they finished at 77th percentile. Not included in the slide, last year, it's apples and oranges, comparing apples and oranges, because it's a different cohort, but our first year doing it the previous year, we ended up in reading at 69th percentile. So again, we're looking at growth in the program, because it's different children, but at least it's program gains for us, so we're excited about that. And you'll see that in Nathan's slide, when we ended up 69th percentile the previous year, when he, the students took STAR in third grade, they made tremendous, they made some growth as well. I just can't put that on my chart, because it doesn't relate to Center School. On math, again, tremendous, tremendous growth. We had some great professional development in math this year. We had some programs that were non-negotiables to make sure there's some consistency, K through two and, and grade two math. They made tremendous growth as grade two from 68th percentile as a baseline up until the 86th percentile. The previous year, they finished off in math at 71st percentile. So again, apples to oranges with smaller kids, but the program, looking strongly at the math program and the reading program at Center School. I'm very pleased and I can't thank the staff enough for all their hard work in our professional development with our letters training and Big Dippers and all the training we did in Language Arts and our Number Corner and other programs in mathematics. So congratulations and kudos to the staff. How this translates into grade three through five, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague right now.
Thank you. Okay. So we do have the New Hampshire SAS, New Hampshire statewide assessment system. It's an online computer-based test, it's lengthy, students take it over the course of several days in each subject area. In ELA, math, and then fifth graders also take a science assessment that we look at a little differently than this. So what you're seeing is the last three years' worth of data, so you can kind of follow, if you look at like the blue cohort or the tan, how they were in spring 2020 as third graders, and then waterfalling all the way down. You know, some cohorts are making more growth than others, so our job is, as we're going back to analyze data and student groupings, you know, why is the blue group making more growth than perhaps the green group and what strategies were used or interventions did we put in place at that time to sort of help that? Numbers lower than we've seen at Marsden over the years, but again, we're following the trajectory nicely of the state. We obviously do better than the state, but the research is showing that huge drop-off in 2021. And now we're slowly climbing out and it's plateauing a little bit, which is pretty consistent with what's going on at our school. But obviously, we have some good things happening in certain grade levels, so how do we tap into what fifth grade was doing in ELA, as they were, you know, one of our higher proficiency ratings in our school? I think the work we did this year with demonstrated success in kind of refining and revising our curriculum, last year we were sort of building things, rebuilding it. We hadn't looked at ELA since my first year here 10 years ago. And so we finally got to do that last year and now I'll be excited this year, because we get to implement all of the work that we did over the course of this year, both in terms of, you know, curriculum and instruction and assessment. So, you know, room to grow, of course, and it's a starting place for us, but it is what it is, so we take the data for what it is and I try not to make excuses and add butts and what-ifs and just look at it for what it is and go down and dig through the numbers and, and look at what are we doing well as a school in terms of ELA instruction? And then what areas do we need to sort of enhance or refine to make a little better? For math, okay. Again, similar treads, kind of flattening out in terms of mathematics. I'm not overly surprised, again, a curriculum area we haven't done much work on in a long time, I'm really looking forward to next year and some of the work that we're going to be doing with our math curriculum leaders. Doing better than the state, but that's all sort of relative, given the state of New Hampshire. You know, room for us, of course, to grow as well. Some nice gains when you were looking across the board and, you know, when you take our waterfalls and then put it up with Hampton Academies, you can kind of see how the kids are doing as they go from fifth grade to sixth grade and on. But certainly some, some work to do in math, without a doubt. But I'm excited with our new interventionist that we have in that position last year and sort of getting into her second year in that role, and then just supporting math instruction across the board. Our STAR data, there you go, thank you. So if you look at the colors, it'll tell you sort of how did those students end up for us as third graders the year before last, so 2022? Where did they come in in the fall? And you can kind of see some of the dips that happened between June and September, when we take these assessments. But still some nice growth, students moving up, you know, in almost all areas, a little bit flat across the board in math in terms of third grade, but fourth and fifth seem to be making nice growth. And then some great growth in ELA, a little bit stagnant in fifth grade, but then their SAS scores were higher in ELA. So how do we look at both the STAR data and the SAS data as two of our many data points? Keeping in mind that these are important, just to give you an overview of STAR, it's about a 30 to 40-minute test, you do it in one sitting, it's multiple choice, where New Hampshire SAS is more multiple choice, construction response, short answer, long answer, essay, reading and writing, all combined. So, you know, again, STAR is, is projecting in the right direction, so how do we take, you know, some of the data that we can get from that? so how do we take, you know, some of the data that we can get from that and compare it to our SAS data, and then make decisions that are going to be the best interest of our students? So if we go to the next slide, it sort of talks about our plan. It's very similar, K-five, because we do a lot in coordination with one another. The hope is that Center School's building all those foundational skills and then sending it to Marston, and we're reinforcing and enhancing them. We are going to be doing data dives like we always do to identify strengths and areas of improvements in both curriculum and instructional practices. Again, looking at the new refined curriculum maps and the resources that we're going to be utilizing to help, you know, support students in need. We're going to always monitor student progress throughout the year. So we use STAR three times a year to assess students. We can really give it as often as we want, and so there are some students who take it more than three times because it's a progress monitoring or benchmarking tool for us. It plans for tiered interventions. We were talking earlier about Title I, the hope is that, you know, funding levels, if people fill out those forms, we can get more Title I funding, and then of course, get more tutors in the building to support students in small groups. And then, of course, we're very fortunate with our Target Assist, our reading specialists, and then our, you know, special education department. Do differentiation. The scope and sequences are always in flux, you know. Sometimes we think that something's going to be heavily emphasized on a state test, and then it's not. Or we test in May, and it might be a curricular area that we get to in late May. So it's always looking at those and where were some of the heavy major standards that we could identify, and how do we need to refine the order to which we teach? We're going to be completing that ELA work this year. Our focus, at least at Marston School, is going to be on our assessments. How can we mirror, not teach the tests, but mirror them so they are asking the same depth of knowledge questions in the same format that you would see on the statewide assessment? Some of our teachers do use the modular assessments, which are like practice tests, but they give great data and they're very similar to the New Hampshire SAS. It's a wonderful tool for us to use. We're beginning that math curriculum work, of course, K-five, with demonstrated success. We did some summer programming this year with both identified students and our regular ed. So it'd be nice to look at some of that data when we return and make sure that kids who really need support, we supported over the summer. You saw some of those slides, that backslide that we get, the summer slide. So hopefully, these programs that we put in place this summer and these interventions will help kind of alleviate some of that and lessen it, which helps us out a lot. And then, of course, as I said, using the modular assessments for skill reinforcement, small group instruction, and refining common assessments. So, you know, not where we usually are at Marston, but I'm optimistic. I think we've got great teams in place and great systems that we can utilize. We're doing some great work at the district level with RTI and how we're responding to students who need a tiered support. So again, I look forward to what's going to bring us in terms of STAR in the fall throughout the year, and then SAS in the springtime.
A quick question.
Yes.
Of the points that are up there, other than the demonstrated success for ELA and math, aren't you already doing all those other things?
Yep.
Okay.
They're at common practices, so we say what's next. They've been working for us for a long time.
Sure. So the only difference is the demonstrated success?
Is the, yeah, we finally got to look last year at the ELA curriculum, which was nice. It's been a long time since we've looked at those instructional practices, and then this year, starting math. Most of those stayed the same. We've done summer programming, it's been a little different over the years, just with COVID funding fluctuating and how we've been able to implement some of that stuff. Yeah, we're always planning for tiered instruction, we're always trying to meet kids. I would say at all three schools, we do a really nice job looking not just at academics, but at behavior and social emotional needs. So it's looking at, you know, we talk about MTSSB, multi-tiered systems of support and behavior, but also academics. And how do we really look at the whole child? Because if we aren't supporting them with their social emotional behavior needs, the academics aren't going to come. So it's that very delicate balance in a three-through-five school, and of course, K-five, as Tim's trying to build things down at Center School.
Any questions?
He's taller than I am. So, starting off real quick with our New Hampshire SAS ELA scores. You can see that this is an area that we grew a lot in. And, you know, I think during COVID, one of the things that kids were still doing was they were reading, and, you know, I praise the library for that one. So our averages are, you can see, spring twenty-twenty-one, we're back to where we were there. I think if you went back in time, you'd see the same thing for the seventh grade. We're in a, we're in a good place. We're still doing the ELA work with demonstrated success, looking over our scope and sequence especially. And, yeah, we can go into math. Math scores for the New Hampshire SAS, moving our way up. And I think one of the things this year that really helped was having the interventionists back in place and having all of our math teachers in place. So it's a little bit of a slower gain in some areas. And we started working with demonstrated success last year to go over our curriculum, just because we're compartmentalized here. So we were able to sit down, you know, we weren't putting extra work on the same teachers like they are at the elementary school. So we were able to sit down, start going over our scope and sequence, and showing the teachers the scores that they had, introducing them to the modulators of the tests. And they started actually using those partway through the year so the kids could see how they were going to be getting questions asked on the New Hampshire SAS with the subjects that they were learning in math class at the time. And then the teachers could go back and analyze the data and what kids got right and what they needed to work on.
Math is, math is an area that's, there's concerns nationally right now. In our state, you can see that the state average is thirty-eight percent, which is pretty concerning, right? We know that last year, we were all very concerned with the numbers that we saw. I think although these numbers are not stellar by any means, the fact that we're moving in the right direction is a good sign. In fact, the commissioner said, he said, if you're starting to rebound, he said, I am elated, he said, because it's not the case in the state. He said, what we're seeing in the state is they're not rebounding. So was very pleased to hear that, and told me so, told Mariah so. We know there's still more work to do, we don't rest on our laurels, this is not what we want. The goal is that, you know, all students would be in the proficient range, so eighty percent or greater. So we have work to do, but at least if we're starting to make some gains, we are moving in the right direction, and then we want to continue to grow this. So I think that the work we did last year with demonstrated success and doing some data dives and really looking at curriculum and being very, I would say intentional with the work that we're doing, is starting to pay off. So we hope to build on that.
I do have a quick question. So I know we filled a math position last month, do we have a math interventionist?
One of the existing math teachers.
Okay.
Is moving into the interventionist position and just finished her thesis, master's thesis on RTI.
Awesome, thank you.
Our overall STAR math, starting in fall of twenty-twenty-one, and you can follow the blue squares over. You can see that we definitely, you know, math is still the area that we're going to be focusing on, different ways. And I'll explain that in a few minutes, but still, you know, the growth for our eighth grade, we're almost at that eighty percent. And, you know, we are, we're moving forward. I think that the math suffered more, at least through the data, through COVID than some of the ELA scores, so.
Your math dropped dramatically.
You can go back, Nick.
Seventy-five, with the seventh grade, they've moved into the eighth grade, they only slightly went up three percent. But in the fall, they were at sixty-nine, so they dropped significantly.
I'm sorry, which, the sixty-nine in eighth grade?
No, I know, they're going, I'm saying, I think, he's talking about them dropping the seventy-five in the spring to sixty-nine.
Oh, yeah, typically, when I've done data over the summer, you, you know, to lose six to eight percent. And you're also, you know, it's the beginning of the year when they're coming back. So, you know, it's just the retention over the summer. I think there's also standard deviations that are built in, you know. The STAR is, it's a guide, you know, we use it, and we can look at it as a whole school, but typically, what we're using it for are gauging individual students, you know, to group into different tiers. So tier three is two or more years behind, tier two is one year behind, and then tier one is you're at where you need to be. But then we identify, using the SAS, areas that everybody needs to work on. Geometry was one thing that came up, because typically, talking to the teachers about scope and sequence, they're talking about, you know, they have all of this to do, and then the last thing on everybody's list was always, you know, looking at geometry. And so now they're moving it around so they can introduce it more. We'd be doing it at a tier one level in our shark blocks. So, you know, this is a, this is a guide for me. The, the, you know, going from a seventy-eight percent when the kids are in sixth grade to coming back to seventy-six point five, no, I mean, it's an area that we need to work on. But really, we're, we're talking about honing in on the, maybe a smaller population of students. What are they missing? What are the things that we really need to work on during these shark blocks? Or across all of our math classes, to be able to get those kids to where they need to be?
When is geometry introduced, in the seventh, eighth grade?
There are different aspects of it at each grade level. So it's not like, you know, it's not like a high school geometry course where all you learn about is geometry. You're talking about sometimes shapes, sometimes you're talking about the Pythagorean theorem, sometimes you're talking about, so it's spread out. So each grade level has a little bit in it. So when I look at the math data, especially from the SAS, it breaks it down really well on different standards at different levels. And I can sit down with teachers and say, we're, you know, this is where we're falling short. So we need to focus in on this a little bit more, and.
When's algebra introduced? That's on a selective basis, isn't that correct?
Yeah, so typically, students, all students come in at sixth grade, taking sixth grade math. They take a test at the end of sixth grade to see if they are ready to take pre-algebra the next year instead of seventh grade math. If they are within that cohort, then they take algebra in eighth grade, where most students take algebra in high school. So most eighth graders take pre-algebra in the middle school level.
Do they get exposed to algebra and geometry?
Some of the geometry standards are taught in algebra. So, yeah, they get some of it. But it's just our realization that.
Not all the students get exposed to it, right?
At different levels.
At different levels.
At different, at different levels, yeah. So again, there are the, the standards are there. It's really, you know, all the kids are going to get the geometry standards, but it's making sure that we know that, you know, this is a, this is a weak point for us. So we need to make sure that we're hitting it and not forgetting it, you know what I mean? The curriculum runs so fast, and there's so much that they need to get in. We need to make sure that we take the time to hit every single one that we need to hit. Sometimes, I think over the last few years, you know, kids coming into a grade, we've had to backpedal a little bit because they missed a year of math, you know? They may have, so I think we've been playing catch-up for a few years. And now it's time to, you know, they're starting to move in a more positive direction, you know, between the SAS and the STAR. We're seeing a positive uptick, so, but it's an area that we need to keep working on.
Kids coming into the sixth grade, Marston, okay? Saw the numbers at Marston for math. Instructors talk to one another to identify areas where they need to improve on or areas of weaknesses in general? I'm not talking about select students, I'm talking about the overall class.
Yeah, I mean, one thing that we get from, you know, we have STAR data going all the way back through. Third, fourth, and fifth, yeah, we, I mean, we look over that data. But then, again, we, we look more, you know, when we're separating kids for an RTI group, we're pulling out kids that we know are further behind so we can help focus, and STAR data will help us, you know, either looking individually at students or as a group, what some of the instructional things that they need, if there's a gap, if there's, but that's going to drive the instruction for our interventionists.
Yeah, and through some of our district-level work with RTI, we all complete these, I would say, phenomenal and very comprehensive data grids. So when I receive student lists of second grade going into third grade, Mr. Lannan's team has already placed academic levels where they started, where they ended, behavioral or academic interventions, and then we send a very similar data grid up to Hampton Academy. So they get a pretty comprehensive each student, at least in ELA and math, and also we put some of the behavioral things in there. But that's how we kind of send them up, so when they get the group of fifth graders, over the summer, they've had time to sort of look at some of our STAR data and SAS data and see where each kid kind of fell and where they need to start from, so they can plan the supports at their level. So it's a pretty nice system, and it's one we've been working on over the course of this year between administrators and our pupil services department, so that those grids are comprehensive enough to really tell a picture of where our students' strengths are, but also where they fell down a little bit, and we need to support them a little more.
And when they do the STAR program, which is in the spring, across all three schools?
No, SAS is, they do SAS just three through eight, one time in the spring, and then STAR is grades two through eight, and we administer it in the fall, winter, and spring. But we mostly look at fall to spring comparison.
Administer like the math, and, okay, that's in the spring. Okay, when do you get the results of those?
Immediately. When STAR finishes, we can run a report after the entire class finishes and collect our data. So our Target Assist and our Title I team, right when we finish, let's say, that fall window, and we get all the makeups done, they run all of that, and that's how they reshuffle and plan for groupings based off that data. So it's SAS you have to wait a little bit for, you get it, but you kind of have to wait for the DOE to say the data is okay to go, and you can release it to parents. But STAR data is almost instantaneous. You get it right at the end of the assessment, if you want to take a look.
That also shared with the next.
Yeah, because since we use STAR two through eight, I can log in and look back at Mr. Lannan's second graders. Mr. Hawkins can look back at Marston School.
And instructors also have access to that, so.
Oh, yeah. That's what we do in the beginning of the year at our three-day staff meeting, and it's also one of the big focuses in September, after we get through some of the mandatory trainings. The afternoon is doing exactly that, so that we can take a look at exactly where students are and where we need to plan to help them get where they need to be at the end of the year.
Question for Ken. I asked Nathan this, and he had a list of things that they were doing, and.
Mine's coming up.
Yours is coming up, well, I'm going to ask it just ahead of time. Other than demonstrated success in math and demonstrated success in reading, which you're going to be doing this year, okay? Either are we going to see any of the bullets that are. gonna be doing this, this year, okay, either are we gonna see any of the bullets that are different than what you're already doing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
There you go.
Yep. The next slide is ELA. So same kind of thing, just across the board, our, our STAR data. The, coming across, you know, and it's, it's, it is interesting especially to look at the seventh grade, at the beginning of fall 2021. And I think if we went back and looked at the, the SAS data, it's, it is, it's gonna be, you know, that's sixty-six percent that it says that it's proficient and the SAS data is gonna show that it's higher, okay? Remember, these are eighth graders taking a STAR test at the end of their eighth grade year when they're getting ready to leave. So, you know, sixth grade, some good growth from, over time, we still have plenty of space to improve. I think we can probably go on to the next, this is the list of, so one of the things that we are gonna be looking at is specifically a breakdown in ELA and math because we're doing the curriculum and we're doing the mapping. We are breaking down the SAS scores by categories, okay? And what that means is, you know, overarching standards are being broken down and we're finding out where kids are the weakest, okay? I went to a, a data conference sometime in the spring and they made it very, they had us build all of these great data tables that matched up directly with the standards where our kids were. So my plan is using that as a roadmap and sitting down with the entire staff to be able to start talking about those things. One of the things that when I started we were missing was a, a third data point. So we were using our SAS scores and our STAR scores. The other thing we were using is for progress monitoring, so if a student goes into a tier two math class, they would partway through it, take the STAR again. Well, we already have STAR data. We already have enough STAR data on these students. So one of the things that we spoke of at our district level was really incorporating a third data point for, for ELA, we're gonna be adopting the, the DIBELS, which is the, the reading, and it's, I like it because it's, it's not on a computer. It's sitting down with a kid and learning and being right there with them and it, there's no screen in front of them, okay? The other thing that we also are gonna use is a handwritten math assessment. So there are different ones out there. The one that I have is from Glencoe and it's a grade level. So by the time you get done with sixth grade, you should be able to get an A or above on the test that we give you. And not only does it show you, you know, what percentage you got on the test, but it also shows you what areas you actually need to be working on for you specifically. So looking at tier two and tier three, third point of data, that's gonna help us drive intentional instruction to those, those groups that are below proficiency. The data team, we're gonna be continuing to use the STAR and the SAS, progress monitoring quarterly with my math, reading interventionist and reading specialist, creating groups around the, the holes, not only for our tier one kids, but also the, the more intentional for the, the STAR and the SAS for the, for the tier two and tier three students. Continuing and reviewing, refining the vertical ELA and math curriculum. The, you know, the one thing I didn't put up there was the, the modulators. One of the things that we started using partway through the year for the math and the teachers saw, it really assisted students not on, I, I think mostly on the SAS because that's what the test is, but it also gave them data feedback on what kids may have been missing in their, just for that one lesson. Some of it's the same, but I definitely, there were a couple of things that are added on there.
What are you doing for your staff? What are you doing if someone is having problems teaching a certain thing and it, it's showed by the scores that someone maybe, maybe this never happens, but what if you notice that in one class, a certain class, they're not getting this, this item? What are you doing for that staff member?
One of the things that we're, the way our schedule is set up this year is that all of my grade levels have, so my two eighth grade math teachers now have a CPT planning time to be able to sit down and start talking about not only the lessons that they're doing, what are they using for their lessons, and starting to build common assessments. So if you and I are teaching the same math lesson on a Monday and we're gonna give a test on Friday, by Monday, you and I should be able to sit down and say, you know, go over because it's gonna be the same test. What does your kids do? What does your kids do? That's, that's the conversation that starts, that really needs to start to happen because it's a peer that's helping them. If I identify a, a math teacher who may not be moving along at a consistent percentage either from September until, you know, January when they take the, the STAR again, if that's consistent over time or, you know, then that's a conversation that I need to have with them and that's through supervision evaluation. I, I think we have a, a lot of resources to be able to help our, our teachers, you know. It's, it's interesting to look at the math department at, at the academy because I have two teachers who have, who are continuing contract teachers. I think a third one became a continuing contract teacher this year. So we have a lot of new people, but I can tell you that they're, they're really good. They're taking on new methods. They, if you walk into a math class, you know, in, in seventh or eighth grade, we bought, they're, they're up and they're actually moving around the classroom. They're communicating with each other, they're working through problems with each other, and just within that conversation gets them thinking. It's not a rote memorization kind of, kind of thing, and it's, to me, that, a, a change like that is exciting and I think we're gonna see a lot of growth out of it.
I have a question for you and I'm probably gonna use a dirty word, so please bear with me. Homework.
Yep.
I don't know, do you still have homework go out or is that like the dirty word of the school, because I don't hear anything and, and I don't hear people saying I do homework or homework. And I'm looking at homework in math and in reading as basically a reinforcement of the fifteen, twenty minutes that you get exposed to whatever it is in the math class because it's a, I take it it's what, fifty minutes?
Fifty minutes.
Okay, so it's a fifteen minute, by the time the teacher gets up and running, it's probably gonna be down to forty minutes. So it's just reinforcing what they've learned that day and if there's any weaknesses identified, then the teachers can go back and, and reassess where those weaknesses are or the understanding like in geometry or algebra or basic math. So going back to my dirty word of homework, is it, do teachers give out homework in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in those particular subjects?
I can tell you that, I can pinpoint a few subject areas and teachers that consistently give out that homework. And some of those are upper level, you know, you're, you're looking at an algebra class, you're looking at-
But not across the board.
French one. I think that, I think that there is homework given, but at the same time, it is not something that is, it's not overwhelming to students. It's not, you know, they're not leaving here and going home and only doing homework. I think the way the teachers do it here is, you know, sometimes at the end of class, if you still have a few things to work on, you need to finish that for homework. The projects that kids, you know, if you come in the morning and watch kids get out of their parents' cars, they're, they're coming in with projects that they've built for, as their homework assignment. So it, it is out there, do I-
But it's not consistent.
I, I, I don't, I don't go in and it's not something that I've ever sat down and specifically monitored, you know, the-
Would you ascertain-
Some of, some of the data that, that I have-
No, no, but I'm saying, would you ascertain that in those particular two areas, that if teachers gave out, I'm not talking about three hours worth of homework, I'm just talking about maybe half hour or so of just reviewing what was covered in the classroom so that they would understand the course better and, and the math.
I, I don't know that that's where the, the, I don't know where that, I don't think that's where the gap is. I think what has happened is, over time, you know, when we sit down and we do our mapping and we do our vertical alignment in math and look at it, it's something that we're noticing. It's something that this year out of the data, I can pull out and, you know, over a couple of years, that's where it is. So I don't know that adding homework, which there's a wide range of philosophy on it. And-
But we do have a policy.
One of the books I was reading over the summer is that-
We do.
More homework doesn't mean better scores.
Well, the chair will give me the floor, Frank.
I just gave you the floor.
Oh, thank you. Look, there are volumes, there are more articles and books written on the pros and cons of homework and how much is good and is it of value and is it worth it? And I've read most of them because I was in your shoes and, and, and you have folks clamoring for it and you have folks saying you don't want it and don't need it. I'm not sure we're here to answer that question. We've got a policy somewhere-
We do, we have a policy.
On homework.
And our policy book, of which we've all read as well as our staff because they have signed that, that they have read and understand policies.
Right.
So I'm sure they've all done that.
And there's no pan, there's no panacea, there's no magic bullets. I'm, I'm more interested in what, what you're doing here and I, I think that's far more important than the homework debate. I don't think this is-
But my, my point was-
I don't think this is the place for the homework debate.
No, no, but my point was-
That is why they have the beauty of five people on this board.
Correct.
Because you get five distinct and different opinions. You can take the opinions that you want, you can use the opinions you want, you can discard them, the one thing that we all have to do is listen to them. So go ahead, Mr. Hawkins, is there anything else that you'd like to say or?
No, I think I'm, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we took care of the, the summer programming.
We took care of it?
Yep, well, let's address it. Yep, so we're good.
Well, now that we get down to the nuts and bolts of the finance department.
Yes, so I gave you the operating budget for July. It just got the budget put in, most of the payroll is put in there and purchase orders are starting to be encumbered. I also gave you the final fiscal year end numbers for 2223. I gave you the sheet that the auditors gave me, so it looks a little different than what I normally give you. But our final numbers, if you see the assigned fund balance, that's the warrant article amount that gets rolled over that we can utilize next year. So it's not, it's assigned. So that's $294,005. It's a warrant article that we did not finish that we can utilize next year, most of it's for the HVAC. And then we have the assign, the unassigned fund balance and that's where I finished the year off. And we talked about this last school board meeting. I was about $20,000 different than what the auditors came up with once they finished the GAZB adjustments with depreciation and such. So the retainage that we're gonna keep is $293,705. And what we will be giving back to the taxpayers is $135,141 for a total of $428846. That is where we ended for 2223. I will be bringing this to the budget committee in September. The auditors suggested one thing that I should do for the general fund is to have our treasurer assign a deputy. She doesn't have a deputy. So I'm gonna get with Ellen and see if she wants to assign a deputy, then I'll bring it to the, bring it to you guys so that you can vote on it. And then the other two items were on, on student activity accounts. One was at the academy and one was at center and it was just some of the backup and approval wasn't notated and, on their payments and they had some outstanding checks that didn't get put through during their reconcili, reconciliation of their accounts. So that's what they found during our audit. It went pretty well, I think. I can give you all student activities for the last year at the next meeting. I'll print them all out for you so that you have those breakdowns.
You talked to the two people who-
Yes.
So they are aware, what happened?
Yep, um, student activity is usually all, is, is one of those funky things that they, it's hard sometimes to have backup, to have proof, to have stuff. So it is, the auditors usually do find stuff in student activities. So what they did find was pretty, I mean, it wasn't horrendous and it made sense, so.
Does the board, just a quick question, does the board feel that they need a printout of all of the student activity disbursements? I, I don't feel I need one.
Okay, I gave them out last year. That's up to you if you guys wanna see them. If you don't wanna see them, that's fine with me too. I do review that calmly.
Just sounds like an awful lot of work for you.
Is there anyone that wants to see the student activity fund?
No.
Okay, then, yeah, we're good. And other, and that was, that's really it for the summer. I'm working on the DOE 25 now to, to give my final numbers to the state and then I have to do the MOE that follows that and food service, oh, that's what I was gonna tell you, food service. Good thing I talked about that. We did have a balance in food service that's getting rolled over. It's been rolled over for two years now. It's really left over as our funds when we were getting free and reduced. Everybody eats free and we, we are below the three months of food service, so, which is good 'cause I'd have to do another whole report to the state. But we have $136,000- But we have $136,657 in our fund balance for food service for next year.
Wow.
Yeah. So, that... I was pretty impressed with that. I'm glad I... I'm actually happy with how the year ended and the audit, so.
Questions for Mariah? No questions? Okay. Nominations?
Can I... Can we hold off on nomination and...
Resignation.
Retirements and whatever until after a...
Non-public?
Non-public.
Yep. We can do that. The... Oops, sorry. 101.1 ACR nondiscrimination grievance procedure. We need to review that policy. It's a first read, I believe.
Has it been changed? The date on it is 2020. Was this included for conversation? Lois?
I'm guessing... I'm guessing it is. Yep.
Because we did not... This wasn't something that we went over. I don't think there's an update to it. I think it's here for informational purposes. I don't... Do we need to go into... Are we ready to go into non-public? I don't think we see anything else.
Okay.
I mean, I could be wrong.
Did... Sorry. Did we accept this as a first read or we don't know?
We don't have to.
We don't need to.
We don't have to.
It hasn't been changed. That's not why it's here.
So, it's just...
It's informational, is my guess.
I think every... We have to look at it every two years. That's why it's there.
Oh, okay.
Because you have to look at no less than every two years. So, we're looking at it if you give it the...
Oh, okay.
It's required.
Okay, so...
Yep.
Look it over and we'll vote on it.
And if it looks good, we can just update it.
We have the minutes of Tuesday, July 11, 2023. I will remind the minutes have to be out within 72 hours of our meeting so that we need to do that because we don't want anyone saying that we don't have our minutes. So, we do need to do that within 72 hours.
Yep.
Any corrections?
I might have a suggestion on...
Yep.
If I count each... One, two, three, four. On page five, the next to the... Down near the bottom, it's a motion to accept Abby's letter. And I'm thinking that should say of resignation.
Okay.
Just for clarification.
Yep. Yep.
That was all I saw.
What else?
Oh, on the second page, right up near the top. Discussion on the past... I think that should be P-A-S-T, past. Employee that got sentenced for embezzlement of money. Mr. Shepherd was approached by someone asking not how they did that, but asking how they were able to get hired.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
That's all.
I got it. I'll make notes.
Any other... So, admissions?
And that move, we accept them?
It's been moved and seconded by Wendy. All those in favor?
I should have said as amended, but we know that.
I will. Thank you. We'll get it.
Yep. You don't have any correspondence?
There we go.
We do have correspondence.
No, no, we have non-public.
Oh, non-public meetings. The sealed non-public meeting minutes of July 11. Do I have a motion to accept them?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second. Second by Wendy. All those in favor? Those opposed? Okay. Those minutes are accepted. Now, why we call for a motion for a non-public under RSA 91-8, semicolon, 3, 2, A. Frank?
Yep.
Wendy?
Yep.
Andrea? Les? Okay, we will go into non-public at 7:30?
7:35.
7:30? Okay. Motion to hire Jocelyn Snyder for grade...
I nominate.
She nominated.
Lois is nominating. I'll... Do you have... We have to approve it though, right?
She's going to nominate.
Okay, you nominate.
All right, I'm going to nominate.
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay.
Next one.
Yep.
Thank you, Mariah. All right, so Jocelyn will be in grade one. And also, we have Sean Sullivan at Hampton Academy as the health teacher replacing Rachel Fortier. I have a nomination.
I'll second it. Or you can.
Whoever.
First and second because... All those in favor of Sean Sullivan?
And then, last but not least, we have a letter of resignation from Amanda Jagington-Fulze, teacher at Center School.
I'll make the motion to accept.
I'll second.
I'll second or whatever. Just with a comment because I think it needs to be said. Little late in the game for a resignation.
Oh, little late in the game, yes. All those in favor of accepting her resignation? Okay. We don't have to replace... We won't have an opening because we didn't replace... We didn't cancel the math interventionist.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to seal the non-public minutes.
Second?
Second.
Second. I've been made in seconding to seal the non-public meeting minutes. All those in favor? Is there anything else that anyone would like to say or do?
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
It has nothing to do with anything, but the meeting in October...
October?
October.
Okay, yep.
I believe... Hold on. I'd like to make a... I'd like to suggest, and you guys can shoot it down, so it doesn't matter. Our meeting is going to be, I believe, on the 10th.
Yeah, you're going to see the 17th.
Yeah, I'm going to be away. Can we move it to the 24th?
Yep. The only problem with that, and I don't have a problem, but it is going to be starting in the budget season.
Yeah, no, I understand that. But I'm going to be out of the country from the 8th through the 17th.
Okay. Does anyone have a problem?
Is that a thing? Because I'm going to be out next month.
Well, I don't care about the...
We can move next month's meeting.
Well, you're going to be out for three months.
I didn't know that was a thing we could do. I don't want it. I know, I don't want it.
Well, I suppose... I suppose we could.
I was kind of just being...
My thought would be, because I was in Chicago and meeting the two before. I think if folks can't make it, they can't make it. I... You know, I think we try to...
Yep.
Even for you, and I'm sorry, and for Frank, I'm sorry.
I really wish you'd been...
I think we should try to keep with the same...
But we did make an exception when you weren't around one time. We moved it a week. Yeah? We did.
Still, I mean, do we have anything super important in October that you can't miss?
No, no, but I mean, for you, I think we can, you know, do remote.
No, I will be unavailable that night.
It go...
Well, if you don't, that's fine.
No, but when is our next...
I think we should just leave them.
When is our next meeting in September? What day?
September 12th.
September 12th. So, we'd go from September 12th to October 24th.
That's two weeks later.
I think we should leave them both where they are.
Well, it's okay. I just suggested it. You guys don't need me.
Yeah.
We always need you folks if you're available.
No one person is indispensable.
All those... So, we've decided on that? We're not going to change it? Is that all?
I believe so.
Okay. The other question? We also remember that we have a meeting on August 24th.
Got it.
What?
Where is it?
No. Well, I mean, no, I was not told we had a meeting on August.
You got that email?
No.
6 o'clock.
You're the one that responded back about your surgery on the email.
Oh, okay. Oh, then the email from a really long time ago?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Just remind people that we have a meeting on August 24th.
Thank you for doing that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I remember your response.
Okay.
Because I didn't know what we were talking about.
As long as I can be...
At 6.
That one, you said you do remote.
And that's in the community room?
Yep.
And this is at the SAU?
Community room.
Community room.
Community room, okay.
Any other questions or comments or business to come before the board?
And you're going to send an email out telling me what time it is and all that?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock, okay.
6 o'clock.
I'll put it in.
So, somebody will need to send me a link of some sort?
We can do that.
So, I can vote.
Yep. You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments, or anything? Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All the missions... Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? The meeting is adjourned.